We're gonna start now.
We're gonna start now.
Morning, this is the public hearing of the Committee to Hold. The purpose of this hearing is to consider Bill Number 180108 and Resolution Number 180124. Mr. Christmas, please read the titles of the bill and resolution.
Bill 180108 in ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to enter into lease agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development under which the city would lease to pay on a project-by-project basis certain land and facilities in the Fairmount Park System, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia System, and which would permit pay to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations in conformity with the Economic Development Financing Law as amended all under certain terms and conditions. And Resolution 180124 approving the rebuild project statement including annual budgets for project expenditures for fiscal years 2018 and 19, a list of city properties to be included in the program and a master economic opportunity plan.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. The first witness to testify is? Mr. Christmas? I'm asking you, Mr. Christmas. I'm gonna do Nicole. Yeah, but that's sure.
Nicole Westerman.
Good morning. Nicole Westerman, Executive Director of Rebuild. I am here to take questions this morning.
Oh, you just wanna go right in? No testimony? I understand. All right, you wanna jump right into questions? Okay. So, thank you. So, as you know, we have recessed several times and it is our hope today that we've had, we're prepared to respond to the questions that have been brought up over the last several weeks. I do have a couple of issues with respect to our meeting yesterday to talk about a couple of those things. Needed a little clarity. One, on this proposed PRA union card. Can you explain that to me exactly? What is that and what does it mean? Because my questions are primarily centered around the PRA component.
Sure, so Jim Engler, Deputy Mayor for Policy and Legislation, I guess also Acting Deputy Mayor for Labor. So when someone is hired at the PRA for purposes of this program, they will receive a union card for work at PRA, they will receive union benefits.
And what union will that be? I'm sorry to cut you off.
Whatever trade their work is associated with.
So the PRA will issue a union card based on rate of a particular trade, based on benefits of a particular trade, okay?
For whatever trade the individual's hired for.
And the unions have signed off on that issuance?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is that in writing anywhere?
So we have a memorandum of understanding that was approved at the Building Trades Meeting yesterday. Greg Heller, who's the Executive Director of the PRA, has been out of town, so we expect to have that signed before the legislation is approved by council possibly next week.
So the details of the union card is in fact in the document that they will be signing?
I'll have to look back at the MOU, but it is covered in the MOU that they...
I'm asking a very specific question. Is the details of the issuance of the PRA union card in the document?
The MOU indicates that there will be that provisional card issued as soon as an employee is hired by the Redevelopment Authority.
It indicates, or it says it in the language?
So the language is... Number 13 on the MOU indicates individuals holding provisional union cards shall be supervised by journeyman and PRA's employ and within the same trade. And I'm just sorry looking for the first reference to the provisional card, which is...
It's number six. So number six in the MOU says creates a process for PRA employees hired through this initiative to begin, to be given provisional union cards for a requisite period of time agreed upon by the PRA and the union, which is the provisional period.
Okay. The, one of the other issues is, and I'll talk to you briefly about this, is the hours, the 3,000 hours required to be subsequently qualified? And I need to get a sense of the 3,000 hours. Why 3,000 hours? Is it consistent with the traditional apprenticeship programs that unions have? And I know that different unions have different requirements, but I still need to know where that number end. Is it, can we anticipate? And, you know, because it's construction, I don't know a lot about construction, know a lot about development, but not a lot about construction. The reality is, is my understanding, when you don't work, you don't necessarily get paid. And this work by PRA, I assume a lot of it will be indoors, so it may not be weather-related in terms of being able to work. So do we anticipate these people getting paid and working the hours regardless of weather conditions?
I think that's...
Because normally when you get hired by an agency, you work 40 hours. So will these people be guaranteed a 40-hour work week?
So why we ended up at the 3,000 hours? Obviously each apprenticeship program is different, they have different set hours for how you can move up in that program. We set at the 3,000 hours because that was a good middle point for several apprenticeship programs. As far as the guaranteed work, I think to your point, a lot of this work is going to be indoors. We're talking about rec centers and libraries that are part of this program where there's going to be a lot of renovations indoors. As far as the guaranteed hours, I think that's something that we would like to do. It's not laid out in the documents here today, but I think that's something that we certainly want to do with them.
If I, I'm sorry, if I can just add to that, as you know, council members actually have the authority to determine the method of project delivery for each rebuild project. So what we're hoping to do is work with council members to identify those rebuild projects that are in PRA's wheelhouse, you know, that are a good fit with the skills of PRA, and ensure that there is a continuous stream of PRA projects for those employees to work on.
Okay. So in prior years, and this goes back a little bit, when PRA actually had a strong construction division, did a lot of work. Were they 40-hour employees? I'm just trying to say, we're hiring people for a city agency. Normally when we hire a person for a city agency, and they end up being in the union, 33, 47, whatever, they are guaranteed 40 hours. So I'm just trying to say, are these people that are being hired in the RDA, are they gonna have a 40-hour work week? Or is it gonna be a situation where we hire these people and then, because if they don't have a 40-hour work week, then we may not get to the quote-unquote 3,000 hours or 18 months in a reasonable timeframe?
So they will be working as long as there is work, construction work for them to do. If there is not construction work for them to do, then their position can't be maintained at PRA. So that's why it's incumbent on us, the rebuild staff, working with council members, to construct a continuous pipeline of projects for those individuals to work on so that they can get their 3,000 hours.
All right. So we're basically creating a whole new classification of employee at the Redevelopment Authority. And with that, because I'm telling you, everybody else that works over there, they get hired, they work 40 hours. And with that, is there gonna be any issues with respect to the unions that currently represent the RDA? And you know, we already have a whole lot of drama going over there now, which is keeping us from our consolidation plan pursuant to the charter change that we did a couple of years.
So I don't want to speak for PRA, but my understanding is that PRA hires workers off the bench when they need workers to do work. And then when they no longer have work for those employees, then they, the work, they're laid off.
That's your understanding? Is there anybody here from the Redevelopment Authority to... I'm saying, you know, I hate to be grilling you like this, but we've been talking about this for a while, and it's like, there's still like a lot of uncertainty, all due respect. I mean...
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Mary Fogg, and I'm the Director of Government Relations at the Redevelopment Authority. Greg Heller is out of town today. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, if I'm capable.
Okay. So the people that currently work in the Maintenance Division at the RDA, I know it's a limited staff now. Do they all have 40-hour work weeks?
Right now, we have, I believe we have 11 members of, in our maintenance staff and our construction crew, and they do get a 40-hour work week right now because we're, this is, we're very busy this time of year. But there are times when they're sent back to the hall when we don't have work.
And I think that's why, to Nicole's point, it's important and incumbent upon us working together with council and the rebuild staff to create that steady pipeline of projects so that way there is no time where they're not working.
Well, we want the steady line. I mean, we like ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings, just like the administration. So I'm just simply asking a question. If you're creating a new classification of employee at the RDA, because I'm not clear what your response was, one, you said they got a 40-hour work week, and then you say you send them back to the hall.
If we don't have work, if we don't have work for them, they, you know, we're not going to keep them on staff. But for the most part, they do get a 40-hour work.
11 people that work there now have 40-hour work weeks, right?
Yes.
All right, period. You have not sent anybody over there to Redevelopment Authority back to the hall?
Not, not recently.
All right, okay. That's what I'm trying to get. So we're now creating a new classification of employee that may or may not work 40 hours, then we need to spell that out. Because as much as we'd like to sit here and talk about that, my 5,000 years in government tell me that's not as simple as you're saying, because of the union representation of the Redevelopment Authority.
We can confirm...
The 11 people you currently have there are represented by the union, right?
By the building trades unions. By the building trades unions. We also have District Council 33, 1971, for the regular employees, but the maintenance staff are represented by the building trades.
All right.
And the intention is, I believe, is, again, we'll confirm, but I believe the intention is not to create a different classification of employees, that these would be employees that are part of the building trades that are working with the Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, I'm not saying it's your intention or what, I'm just answering a simple question. You hire these people, they're gonna get 40 hours, right?
Yes.
If they do the 40 hours, they'll get to their required 3,000 hours in 18 months, approximately. Fine, right? But that's what I'm trying to get you to say.
That's our hope.
And if you don't feel comfortable saying it, I'm fine with that too, that I can't guarantee you that it's gonna be a 40-hour work week at the Redevelopment.
That's our hope with rebuild, once it gets started. Our hope is to give them 40 hours work.
And then if the council members select PRA as the project delivery method for the projects, then we'll be able to create that continuous pipeline of projects.
Okay. And then one last question, and I'm gonna get off of this. There is a provision that talks about at the end of the 18-month process where the Redevelopment Authority and the building trades will make a determination as to whether or not that employee moves on to the next phase, which is full union status in that particular trade. Anytime you have more than one person that has to make a decision, there's always a possibility where there will be a disagreement. Upon such a disagreement, if it happens, we hope it doesn't, who supersedes in terms of the final decision, the RDA or the building trade?
So at the end of the 3,000 hours, the worker will go through a skills assessment, which is gonna be jointly designed by the PRA and the trades union, whatever the applicable trade union is for that worker. They will do the assessment, and then the results of that assessment will determine at what level of union membership they go into, whether it's as an apprenticeship or a journeyman. It's not a test, it's a specifically designed skills assessment.
It's a test though.
To be able to assess their skills.
I mean, if it's a test, this is...
But it's not a, I wouldn't describe it as a test because it's not pass/fail. It's designed, it will be designed in order to determine the correct level of skills that they have to go into union membership. And that's, that's to help with contractors when they're gonna transition out of PRA and to go work for another contractor, for that contractor to be able to say, okay, this person has the skills associated with the journeyman, or this person has the skills associated with a Level 3 apprentice, depending on where their skills are after that 3,000 hours worked.
But not that the person is not qualified to do any level of the particular trades, then therefore you're out of the program?
No, that is, that is the exact opposite of what we're trying to do. We just want to assess what level of skills they have after that 3,000 hours worked.
Okay. All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to each of you. I just want to follow up on President Clark's line of questioning and to make sure that I have a clear understanding so that when we, again, we're working through budget briefings and town hall meetings now, I need to be able to communicate this to my constituency. So one, throughout the process, we talked about and specifically outlined via resolution this council passed unanimously, that we wanted a vehicle for grown folks who have already been in this business for many years but are just not a part of the union, we wanted them to have access. And this is via the PRA, what we're describing here today, and that total number is 30. Am I, so 30, is that correct?
I think that's what we expect, yes.
So 30. And I just, again, want to make sure that I understand it. As soon as you become, and you become one of these, one of these members because you're hired by the PRA.
Yes.
And, and, and the PRA gets this pull from...
So there'll be an application process through Philadelphia Works. They'll go to Philadelphia Works, apply, and then, then they'll be hired by PRA after going through PRA's process.
Okay, so I'm, I'm working through council's role in how we promoting it, right? So the application is developed, Philadelphia Works has it, people can complete it, and that is for them to be directly hired with PRA. Now, as soon as I am hired by PRA, I have this, I have a card. I have a, I have a quote-unquote PRA union card, and as you, if I want to make sure I'm understanding what you just described to the president, based on my respective trade that, where I am skilled, I have that card, so I'm getting that pay rate, I'm getting those healthcare benefits and everything that is afforded to people in that respective trade.
Yes.
Okay, and then, and I want to, again, make sure I get this too. The 3,000 hours, and I want you to help me, because I know there's a program with PHA, right, that people have gone through, and we've used that as a path. How, how long? Here, the requirement is you must attain this 3,000 hours, which is approximately 18, 18 months. And, and the PHA program, what is, what is that like?
So that's three years.
So you have to work for three years before you can get access?
Correct.
To a full-blown union card?
Yeah, and the way the 3,000 hours work, to the, to the council president's question, it works out to about 18 months of steady 40-hour work weeks.
Okay, all right. Now let me ask you this. We talk about the PRA workers working on rebuild projects. Does the City of Philadelphia Administration have the ability to direct other development, City of Philadelphia development opportunities via PRA so this workforce can be employed on that, or is that not possible?
So what we've designed for this is specifically for rebuild. After their 3,000 hours, after they become full union members, they may go work on other, they may stay at the Redevelopment Authority, they can go work on other city-related PRA programs. projects. But what we anticipate for these workers hired for this specific program, it'll be on rebuild projects.
The next, the next vehicle, the next point of entry, well, wait, before we move on to that one, let's get to the skills assessment again. The skills assessment is developed by managers at the PRA along with the, along with the trades?
Yes.
And when, when you say that I have to, you know, be assessed, my skill set, in essence, has to be rated, not to see, see if I pass or fail this test, but this skills assessment is just to determine, if I'm going in to be a steam fitter, the skills assessment is to determine if I'm going in as a journeyman, a first-year apprentice, a second-year apprentice, so it's just to determine where my point of entry is into the union?
Yes, that's correct. And the reason we wanted PRA to be involved in that is because PRA will be working, the PRA kind of master workers, their senior staff, will be working alongside these individuals, and we want them to make sure that they are trained and gain the experience during that 3,000 hours that prepares them to take that assessment.
Okay, and after those 3,000 hours, in my assessment, I can get a full-blown union card, that I can work on any project I want to, as long as a contractor is willing to hire me. I can even go, what do, what do they call it? It's not shop, but I could go to a work site that's hiring union workers and show my card and say, is there any space available for me?
Yes, you'll have, the worker will have a full-union card at whatever level they go into.
And the final question to you is relative to the neighborhood base and the overall pre-apprenticeship programs, where we talked about the CAPS of the world. That's, I mean, I know they're working very hard on the PEN project, that Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, you know, so, so capably led, and it was historic in terms of development. Those groups, the point of entry is for people who are going through that program, and we expect about 30 people per year? Is that, is that our thinking?
For, I'm sorry, so not the PRA program?
So the PRA, we're finished with that now?
Right, sorry.
So now, those are the grown people?
Yes, sorry. 30 per year is what we're hoping, exactly.
So 30 per year, and how many people in the class or cohort?
12 to 15 per cohort, and two cohorts per year.
Okay, and two cohorts per year, so that's 30 people per year we expect to go through this program, and at the end, we expect these people to become full-blown apprentices and actually have union cards?
That's exactly right. Where the whole goal of that program is to prepare people to successfully pass that apprentice test and become full members of the union.
All of this has already been agreed to by the building trades?
That's memorialized in the MOU that was negotiated last June.
And before council is expected, so that I can tell my people, before we sign off on this, to say it is okay, we will have in writing, an agreement with the building trades of everything that we just described here today.
Exactly. So that MOU will be executed for every rebuild project by the project user, the building trades, and the administration.
And for the, and for the specific PRA MOU, we expect to have that, you know, before council approves the final legislation next week.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to close my remarks by saying, you know, the proof will be in the pudding when we see about the effectiveness and how many people get these cards. I'm looking very closely and getting counsel about what happens on the PEN program, because I know you can get people through the apprenticeship program, and they can take the test, and if people even pass the test at the end, and they still can't get membership after taking the test, I think we need to be quantifiably measuring that, Mr. President, and my hope is that we can use that data to inform our efforts in the future. But I feel very confidently that council and all of my colleagues have meticulously worked through this process, so that we can say, this is not sort of an IOU, or this may happen, but this will be in writing, and I get to go back and tell residents of the Ninth Councilmatic District that a path has been created. This is the first time that I, as a member of this body, have participated in that process, and will be measuring on an annual basis to see what the effectiveness is, and if our people are, again, getting those full cards, to get retirement security, that healthcare, that pension, and everything that goes along with union membership, and Philadelphia preference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Quiet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I had a couple of questions. And, you know, I wanted to start by thanking you all for being here this morning, and I know we said we would connect several weeks ago, and it's been six weeks. And while I'm very glad that you're here and available to answer questions, I think the biggest question that everyone has is, where's the document that we were told we were going to receive five weeks ago? So, when we recessed last, after the last committee, the whole meeting on this subject, it was on March 22nd, we were told the following week that we would actually have a copy of the signed document for us to review. Because even though we're having a lot of conversation this morning, all that conversation is great, and everybody has questions, but it really boils down to being able to review that actual document. And without having that, we're all at a loss. We're all at a disadvantage to being able to understand and to see and to accurately ask the questions that we may have. I have pages and pages of questions that I have, based on what was previously provided. And what we received yesterday is what was previously provided. And so, we have nothing new today. We have nothing new today.
I do think that the newest provision, which is this agreement with the building trades for the Redevelopment Authority, setting this pathway for union membership, is the key change from the last time we had the hearing, and that's the thing that we have been negotiating with the building trades over the past several weeks, and that's what we are presenting to you now.
Where's the, but we don't have the document.
So we have the one pager that was provided. We can, we can provide you with a draft copy of the MOU?
I understand that, but if we're, you know, listen, we're spending taxpayer dollars here. This is, you know, going to be a heavy lift in terms of making sure that we address...
Councilwoman, hold on a second. Excuse me.
Quiet, please, quiet. You all keep quiet, please.
Thank you, Council. I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
But again, we're, you know, asking communities to work with us, to make rebuild happen. We're trying to find pathways to diversify work sites in our communities. You know, there are so many things that we're trying to accomplish with rebuild. And to not have a document that we were promised six weeks ago, that we would have, and to sit here now, all these weeks later, and we still don't have the document, I do not understand why we're here. Because we have no new information that will clarify in writing, in black and white, with signatures attached, and in terms of exactly what we're doing and how we're going to be doing it.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of speculation, there's a lot of, you know, oh, it's going to work this way, or oh, it's going to work that way. But if we don't have it in writing, how can we possibly make a decision to move this legislation out of committee? I don't understand.
So what we provided to council yesterday was the description of the program
I saw that.
as negotiated in the document. We're happy to provide the draft document. It was just agreed to this week. It was presented at the Building Trades Council meeting yesterday and approved.
I think we need to see the real...
And the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority has been out of town for part of this week, so we do expect to have it signed by the latest early part of next week and presented to council, given to council before you vote to possibly pass the legislative package before next week's council session.
Okay. Yeah, no, we need a document. We need the document. We've asked for it, we've asked for it, it's been six weeks. I don't understand why we're here if we don't have that document. And it's easy to say, oh, yeah, we'll get to it, we'll get around to it, because it's somebody else's money. We're asking to spend taxpayer dollars to renovate playgrounds, parks, recreation centers. Everybody wants this. We have a responsibility and obligation to do it and to do it right. And if we're not going to do it right, then we need to sit on the side and wait until we get the document. We have to have the document signed, sealed, and delivered, so that we know what we're delivering to our constituents. Like I said, I have pages and pages of questions. I heard from my colleagues, from some of the questions they asked, there's still a whole lot of questions, based on what they asked, that were not answered. I mean, I could go on to, you know, some of the questions about what the salaries are, and how are we hiring 30 folks, when we have a collective bargaining agreement, which says that, you know, there should be a four-to-one ratio in terms of journeyman to apprentices? And how is that going to work if we've got 11 journeymen right now? Is that right, Mary?
I believe it's 11.
If we've got 11, how are we hiring 30 apprentices? The math doesn't work. It doesn't work at all. And so, again, we have a responsibility and obligation. Before we go through, I can go through all of my questions, I got pages of them. But if we don't have the document, what are we doing?
Yeah, so the 30 is over a several-year process. We're also working with the building trades to adjust that ratio. But to your point, we're happy to provide that document as soon as it's, as soon as it's signed. I can provide you a draft copy of it today. Again, it's been approved by everyone, the signatures are not on the page, and we will have that to you before council moves to actually approve the legislation.
Mr. President, I think, based on what Mr. Engler just mentioned, if I'm understanding you correctly, so you're not asking us to move anything out of council today, you are willing to wait until we have that document before we move forward? Is that what you just said?
No, so I said that we will provide the doc, we will provide a draft document to you today.
A draft document?
And then a signed document
Okay.
before council finally approves the legislation, before it's voted on on the floor, if you move it out of committee today.
Mr. President, I would suggest that we would hold until we actually have not a draft document, but a signed document, which is what we were promised six weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Administration. Good morning.
Good morning.
Several follow-ups. Following up to Councilwoman Parker's questions regarding skills assessment, so is the skills assessment new process, new protocol? Is this new for, for Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority?
Yes, this is wholly new and designed specifically for these workers in this process.
Talk to me about Section 3 of HUD. HUD Section 3. Talk to me about that.
Are you talking about the Memorandum of Understanding, Section 3?
Yes.
So the MOU, Section 3, acknowledges individuals hired at PRA through this program will be treated as conventional PRA construction employees for purposes of screening, hiring, probational period, and employment practices, including discipline layoffs and termination.
Unfortunately, my brain can't capture that information quickly like that.
I'm sorry.
So pull it closer to you and restate it, please.
Sure. So the Memorandum of Understanding, Section 3, says, acknowledges that any individuals hired at PRA through this program will be treated as conventional PRA construction employees for purposes of screening, hiring, probational period, and employment practices, including discipline layoffs and termination.
All right. Now, how is this, how is this aligned with the existing relationship that you have with PHA, Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority?
So the traditional hiring practice for PRA, Mary can follow up as well, is that they traditionally just hire people off the bench, they hire people from the trades. What this agreement does, it allows us to hire people outside of that process, allows us to hire individuals outside of the traditional method, and allows us to bring them in and make them union members, and then after a certain period of time, allows them to transition over to work for outside contractors as union members.
Okay. So if one is in agreement with the philosophy that the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior, how many PHA residents have, that have gone through the training, have Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority hired last year?
So the PHA program is separate. Those are individuals who work for PHA, and then they can go work as union members in other jobs. They're not necessarily hired by the Redevelopment Authority. This program that we're talking about today would be brand-new for Redevelopment Authority employees, and they would work for the Redevelopment Authority until they hit their 3,000 hours, then have the opportunity to go seek jobs with other signatory contractors.
So there's no existing relationship between PHA and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, none at all?
None.
Okay. You mentioned in response to President Clark's question, that recently you have not sent persons away. What does recently mean? Is that a month? Is that eight weeks? Is that three months? Is it six months?
We, we've been very busy recently, because we're doing a lot of work for capital programs. So our maintenance staff has had steady work the past year and a half.
Past year and a half?
Yeah, we've had a lot of steady work with capital programs, doing a lot of work for the City of Philadelphia.
Okay.
So therefore, our maintenance staff have been very busy.
Okay, then. Lastly, help us understand what has been the dilemma, what has been the impediment, what has been the hurdle, and not, over the last six weeks, since this is the underscore, Councilwoman Bass, a very clear statement. What has been the impediment to not reduce your ideas to writing, so that we have something tangible we can look, see at, because we know that if it is not in writing, it does not exist?
So what we, the direction we got from council about six weeks ago when we had the hearing, was that you wanted us to come back with details of a program that provided a clear path to union membership through the Redevelopment Authority. We've been discussing that with the trades over the past six weeks, to come to this agreement that allows for that clear path. When we reached that agreement, considering everyone's desire to move this project forward, we wanted to come back to council as soon as possible, to provide details on what that agreement is, and to try and move the legislation forward.
So then, we were not clear. We have to take some responsibility in the fact that we were not clear that we wanted a written document, and that was actually the reason
So we have...
why we held it in committee?
Yeah, so we have a written document that we can, that we can provide you. It's a draft form. To my point, the Building Trades Council just approved it this week, so we do not have signatures on the document. And also, the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority has been out of town, so I don't have the signatures on the document. We can provide you with the document, the Memorandum of Understanding that outlines that.
What I think I heard you said is that you can provide us with a draft. And what we know in government is, if it's, if it's not permanently in writing, things change. And so, I'm in complete agreement with others, including Councilwoman Bass, who's made it clear. We need a permanent written document, because the history does not work in favor of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah. And to that point, Councilwoman, the document is agreed to. It is just not signed yet, because of the inability to get the signatures on the page. What we've, what we've said is that before council finally approves the legislation, before it receives a vote, before this body, as early as next week, we will provide that written, signed document to you.
And I would suggest that the order and sequence, in the way you just stated, we're not, we're not aligned. We want the document first, in writing, so that we have a chance to see it, peruse it, approve it, before we feel comfortable moving a major initiative unprecedented out of committee, where we don't even have history to look to, to give us some guideposts on how successful this might be. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Hina.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you. I could appreciate the conversations, it's been going on for some time, and I do understand about the execution of a document, but, you know, as I, as I look at the calendar, council calendar, and, for today, it's council calendar, and there's bills and resolutions and final passages, and half of the calendar is being held because of agreements. So, we pass out legislation, all right, in committees pending execution of documents or agreements with the administration every single week. Is that your understanding?
It's the legislative processes, as council decides.
It's the legislative process since we were created by the Commonwealth. Okay, so, but, I understand. A couple of quick questions, I just want to get, uncertainty. Let me start off by saying, the length of, of hours is 3,000 hours, it equates at 40-hour a week, that's a year and a half. What's the length of the rebuild?
We're expecting rebuild to be about seven years.
So about seven years. And in three years, people will be guaranteed union membership careers as opposed to jobs?
It should be one and a half, if we can, if we could give them continuous employment, it should be about a year and a half.
So we're, we're creating new careers that didn't exist because of the work of this council and the administration?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, wonderful. So guaranteed membership, however, that happens. Another question, this one goes to Ms. Mary Fogg, if I could.
Yes, Councilwoman.
You had, you had mentioned, and your, you know, your experience in leadership over at the RDA has been nothing but... over at the RDA has been nothing but, but stellar in communicating with members here
Thank you.
...for many years, uh, you say the last few years have been pretty busy for the RDA, right?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
All right, so forty-hour work weeks have been
Yes.
...pretty much steady?
Yes, they have.
We have a seven-year rebuild project, and each council member, district council member can assign these new union provisional cards and full membership career, uh, individuals to assignment, so it's actually, we can determine whether they stay employed for seven years or not and, and gain more experience, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, the, the issuance of, of a union card, um, is standard over at, at the RDA, now, if, when times slow down, and there isn't forty-hour work weeks, that means the outside construction world has slowed.
Correct.
And we, as government, can control our own economy through rebuild and other capital projects, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that any different, do you think, even though, I mean, we're totally separate to PHA?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we just use Section Three as, as a model that's successful, um, I mean, it's just like the school district, you know, we're totally separate than the school district.
Correct.
But, um, could, we control our own economy, just like, you know, Recreation Department has its skilled staff, sometimes, are, are there shared staff on some of these capital projects?
Um...
Well, rebuild would be in this case, is, would that be correct?
Our maintenance guys do, do the bulk of the work for the ma, for the capital projects that come to our way, but there are jobs that are too big for our maintenance staff that we do subcontract out.
Great, so, I mean, I think, so, so essentially, council's creating jobs, giving people careers, careers, not a job.
Correct.
All right, uh, and we're in control of our own job career, right?
Correct.
For people who we're giving new careers to, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, I have no further questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to do something a little different today because we do have a council session, this time I'd like to recognize Councilman Heenan for a motion. Motion, recognize Councilman Heenan for a motion to recess, um, the public hearing and the public meeting until 2:00 p.m. today-ish?
Well, let's say 1:30.
1:30.
1:30.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, uh, council, this public hearing and public meeting is recessed until 1:30 today, thank you all very much, um, members? Yeah, only if you promise to go there.
The changes you guys made.
Can we? All right. Uh, good afternoon. This is the continued committee of the whole on Bill Number 180108, 180124, uh, the hearing and the public meeting on Bill 180108 and 180124 will be held, uh, it will be advertised at a later date, thank you all very much.